The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Zalowski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardness, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Seijo Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Talafaro, Alderman Raboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Waguspack, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viejas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spasato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tony, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kappelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein, Alderman King present, Alderman Dowell present, Alderman Hairston present, Sawyer present, Harris present, Mitz present, Mitchell present, Coleman present, Scott present, Taylor present, Irvin present. Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you. It appears that we have a quorum present. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Alderman Hopkins. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
Please remain standing for the invocation, which today we will be honored to have prayer from Reverend D.L., I'm sorry, Reverend L. Bernard Jakes of the West Point Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you for being here, Reverend Jakes.
Honorable Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot, our city clerk, Honorable Anna Valencia, my Alderman, who I call my Alder Sister Sophia King, as well as each of you who comprise the total of this beautiful bouquet of elected officials, I do bring you greetings as senior pastor/teacher of the faith family of West Point Baptist Church. I am grateful for the invitation to stand in this hallowed chamber to ask for God's guidance as you continue working for and toward the betterment of all Chicagoans. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" This question should drive all interaction and discussion as you execute the mandate by which you've been sworn to uphold. It is during this time of invocation that I invite each of you to honor my tradition of bowing your heads. Oh God, as we've entered this session, may this question of what are you doing for others rest at the forefront of the minds of these elected officials who've been charged with serving the greater good. There is a need, however, for you, oh God, to make Thine self visible through presence, patience, power, and protection as these elected officials engage in carrying out the mandates to which they've been charged. Thine presence is needed for our mayor and all the persons to feel the guidance of your hand as they engage in decision-making that can either enrich or impoverish the citizens of Chicago. Thine patience is needed because each person's humanness is marred with imperfection, and that imperfection may find its way into conversation, and your patience is necessary as they continue working through the plan for promoting and enhancing the greater good of Chicago, as well as searching their hearts to determine their intentions. Oh God, as this beautifully diverse body stand with heads bowed in humble submission, we stand reminded of the words spoken by Michael when asked, "What does the Lord require of us?" And the answer was to do justly, which is doing what is fair, to love mercy and walk humbly with God. As these elected officials prepare to engage in upholding, enforcing, and during this time, receiving and discussing a myriad of issues, it is also our prayer that while they are serving for us, that your power is made evident in their lives, and that you protect their lives, cover their families, and give them your strength for the journey. Hear our prayer, oh Lord, hear our prayer, oh Lord. Incline thine ear to us and grant us thy peace. Amen.
Amen. We will now have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining of each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Mr. Joe Olivi.
My name is Joel Olivier, and I'm, I have a small commercial property right there at Six Corners, which is, this is the 45th Ward. James Gardner is our Alderman. I'd like to thank Jim Gardner for looking after what is in the best interest of the people that live in Portage Park and around Six Corners. He is doing the right thing by opposing the building of this 10-story high facility. The developers created this mess at Six Corners, and they should fill in that hole or build upon a mixed-use building that was originally planned in the master plan of 2013, which calls for a five or up to a six-story structure. This building is planned for people that are age 62 or older, which I find discriminatory. It is definitely not affordable housing. 102 units of this building is for independent living, for which the rents range for about $4,000, $4,500 a month. 148 units for assisted living and for dementia care, those rents will range from maybe $5, $6, $7, to $8,000 a month. It is a 10-story building. It is too high for this area. It'll definitely stick up like a sore thumb, and it'll cast a shadow over parts of Six Corners. The only exit and entry into this building is on Kilpatrick, which is a two-lane street. It stretches for about one block. It's between Irving Park and Milwaukee, and it's definitely going to cause bottleneck traffic. It's already congested, so it'll make traffic a lot worse. There'll be more ambulances coming to Six Corners, which will definitely create a worse traffic situation around there. There's over 70,000 vehicles that go through Six Corners on a daily basis, so it's definitely going to create a real mess there because of the nature of the people that live in this building. The developers described it as a cruise ship on land. So basically, what does that tell you? That most of the needs of these people will be met in that facility. So how is that going to help to revitalize Six Corners or bring about economic development which it desperately needs at this time? The former Alderman LeVar at our September 17 community meeting at Copernicus Center, he described it very well. He said it's too high, too wide, and it does not have enough parking. So I don't think it's the right fit for the area. This is downtown Portage Park, Six Corners. We don't need a semi-nursing home in that corner. We need another facility, another building that's more vibrant, that will draw in more young people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Olivi. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Andrew Nelson.
I'm the author of the National Reparations Referendum Petition in Illinois for American Insent of African Slavery. Hopefully it will be approved by Dr. Willie Wilson. It reads thus verbatim, "We, the undersigned registered voters in the state of Illinois, do hereby vote yes to this legally binding public option ballot initiative pursuant to the Real ID Act of 2005, in light of U.S. House Resolution 5404, an act to define the dollar as a fixed weight of gold, shall doctors licensed to practice medicine in the state of Illinois treat homelessness as a medical condition and thereby be allowed to prescribe decent housing as a remedy, initially subsidized through Medicare/Medicaid and subsequently paid for via patients' collective treasury direct accounts credited onto their Real ID compliant Hayek Gold U.S. Hashgraph EBT debit card, standard formatted by Andrew C.M. Nelson, and issued as universal basic income to infinity? Implementation of this presupposes print minting at least $2 billion $20 Harriet Tubman 1 gram aurum, A-U-R-U-M, which is gold embossed paper money, actually gold coinage, United States Notes, parenthetically, $40 billion worth, matched with $60 billion worth in $10 half-gram, $5 quarter-gram, $2 tenth-gram, and $1 twentieth-gram gold-coined U.S. Notes, sourced from Fort Knox Bullion Depository and the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. All $100 billion held in escrow as collateral to securitize a for said credit instrument with dollar gold parity set at 0.5 gram per USD. You know, if we're going to restore the full faith and confidence of the U.S. Dollar's preeminent world reserve currency, we have to get the permanent moratorium on the printing of any more paper fiat currency from the central bank of the United States, which of course is Federal Reserve. And this is the perfect opportunity, recognizing that you can generate credit without creating unsustainable debt. You can use existing debt, and by the way, Federal Reserve Notes are debt instruments, not credit instruments. You can use existing debt for the purposes of infrastructure development, and you can invest in fiscal economy without creating boom-and-bust cycles. And so we're seeing the potential of a new system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The next speaker is Mr. Raymond Jackson. The next speaker is Mr. Reggie Griffin. Reggie Brifin.
Good morning to Honorable Mayor Lori Lightfoot and to the entire city council. My name is Reggie Brifin, and I'm a leader of the Jane Addams Senior Caucus. And I'm also a home care worker for my good friend. One of the key elements of the term "home care worker" is the word "home." The vast majority of seniors who need long-term support and services prefer to stay at home for as long as they can. Home is security, home is community, home is family. As a home care worker, I'm helping my friend age in his own home with dignity and independence. I help him with his personal care, prepare his meals, and make sure he gets his medication. I clean his house, prepare supplies for the next day, and check to make sure he has everything he needs. When my family, when my friend gets ill, the process is much more complicated. I'm a very, I'm very good at taking care of my friend. You get close to the people you are caring for. There are some seniors who do not have a family, and the home care worker becomes their family. Also, home care workers often provide the need, the needed respite that family members need when caring for a family member. Home care is expected to add more jobs than any other field in the coming years. It is one of the fastest-growing jobs in this country, and Illinois will need an additional 18,000 new home care workers to meet the growing home care need in Illinois. In Illinois, discussions on infrastructure tend to focus on our bridges and roads, which are important, but we ignore the equally important infrastructure of care that allows for the home care workforce to exist. This resolution calls on Illinois to build a 21st-century, long-term care infrastructure that works for all seniors and persons with disabilities, regardless of income. Recognize that all seniors deserve access to home quality, long-term in-home care to age with dignity at home. We need to remember that we're all going to get old and need home care. There's always going to be someone who needs care, and that could be you or your family member. Seniors in Illinois deserve a long-term care system that gives us the option to age with dignity with our beloved ones in our homes. Jane Addams Senior Caucus believes that we need to fairly compensate, train, and receive good benefits for the crucial work done by home care workers like myself. This is exactly what the Long-Term Care Resolution aims to do, which is why I support it. Please vote yes, and make sure this issue receives the attention it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Mr. Robert Castigar.
Thank you for having me. My name is Bob Castigar. I'm a resident of the 39th Ward. For quite a few years, there have been a Sunday Mass at Sacred Heart Chapel in North Park Village. The chapel is located in the middle of four rent-supplemented apartment buildings formerly at the tuberculosis center of Chicago, currently home to over 600 senior citizens. Not all are Catholic, and many can't drive and have no easy way to get to church on Sunday. Sometime near the end of August, the Fleet and Facilities Management changed the locks on the chapel. Keys were never provided, and because of this, no access or mass has been held at the chapel since that time. Previously, keys were held by St. Hillary's Parish, who arranged for the mass and to be set on Sundays. Fleet and Facilities Management is trying to set up a new procedure for continued use of the chapel. They want an outside group or agency to take over the management, to have the keys, and to arrange for the chapel for other groups who might want to use it. No other Chicago agency operates this way. There are meetings in the library, but the librarians keep the keys and open and close the doors. There are meetings in the Park District Field Houses, but the Park District Supervisor keeps the keys, opens and closes the doors, and maintains the building. For security purposes, Fleet and Facility Management needs to keep control over their buildings they manage, including the chapel at North Park Village. They need to assign someone from their staff to open and close the doors when necessary and close and lock the doors after use. This is the same procedure that the libraries in the Park District now use. They shouldn't be searching for someone else to do this. Fleet and Facilities Management is free to require a nominal rent for this use. The chapel should be made available to any religious institution, not limited to Catholic Mass on Sundays. I'd like to thank Alderman Nugent for her support in pursuing this, and also to note the historical significance of this chapel. Retired Alderman Margaret Loreno and her spouse Randy were married in this chapel, as many other Chicago notables. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Sister Mary Ellen Meekley.
My name is Sister Mary Ellen, and I am a member of the Jane Addams Senior Caucus. I have been a home health social worker for over 35 years. Being a social worker opened me to a world of all of us will eventually become involved with, aging. Aging parents, aging friends, aging spouses, and ourselves. As a home health social worker, I specialize in connecting seniors and their families to resources, transportation, meals on wheels, in-home care, and the list goes on and on. But for families in need, these resources are a lifeline to maintain their independence and aging with dignity. I am here today to urge you to vote yes on the universal long-term care resolution. I have met seniors who find it difficult and dangerous to live independently at home without the support of in-home care. Many seniors are being forced to spend their entire savings to pay for their own home care workers. As a social worker, I want to help families and seniors access the care they need, regardless of their income. Jane Addams Senior Caucus believes that our legislative priorities should reflect our values. Everyone has an inherent worth and dignity. There is enough for all, and we love and support each other. We envision a world where all seniors are guaranteed quality, affordable housing, healthcare, in-home care, and have the resources and supports to thrive and age with dignity and independence. And we must also support the workers and the family members who make that care possible. This resolution is calling on Governor Pritzker and Illinois legislators to make Illinois a leader by establishing a universal in-home care system that brings our caregiving infrastructure into the 21st century, so the seniors can age with care and dignity regardless of their income, recognizing that all seniors deserve access to quality in-home care services and ensures that all in-home care workers receive quality training and support and a living wage and good benefits. Please cast your yes vote for the seniors in your ward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Ms. Sheila McNulty.
At this time, I respectfully would like to give my time to Ms. Davenport. Thank you.
The next speaker, Ms. Davenport.
Good morning. How you doing, Your Honor? It is a pleasure to finally get to talk to you. I'm a crossing guard out of the 9th District. I live in the 7th District, and it's been such an ongoing thing, trying to talk with you or even get to you. I have sent messages through the scheduling department, invitation for the mayor. No one has responded to it. I have been talked about, cursed out by management or the city. They represent you, which make you look bad, and that's why I'm here speaking on behalf of all crossing guards, not just Davenport. But with that being said, Your Honor, it's been so much going on. They've been taunting me, cussing me out. I mean, it's not just a mental thing. It's physical now because I'm epilepsy. I have seizures once I get upset, but I still come out and I do my job, and I do it well. I love the children. I love people. But now, Your Honor, I'm looking for your help. I have an envelope here. I've been trying to get to you. Every time I come to these meetings, I never have the honor or the pleasure to stand up and speak my mind, to let you know what's going on within the City of Police Department as well as OEMC. I am the crossing guard, January 29, 2019, Davenport. That was on the news when it was cold outside. I didn't say anything derogatory about the city. I just asked, "Why are we out here?" I didn't know I was being interviewed by news media. Next thing I know, it aired. It went national, and everybody now, after that point, even Rich Gaitis along with other management, Bernard Austin, I went to my Alderman at the 7th Ward, Greg Mitchell, no help. Everybody pushed me away. I also got a job, Your Honor, as a detention aide. I honestly got it, did everything to get it, and then they turned around and used your name in vain to say, "The reason why you don't have the job now is because the mayor put everything on hold." I had the job. They held it back, but they trying to slander you to make you look bad. And I thank God for being able to come here today, and the lady let me take her place because I've been coming faithfully every month, Your Honor, and all I'm asking for is help. And if you can take this envelope and look at it yourself, because like I said, I've been going through the proper channels, invitation to the mayor, I've been calling scheduling, I've been down here. Everybody see me, and they'd be like, "Oh, that's Davenport." No, no, no. I even handed off paperwork the last meeting, which was last month, to someone, which they said they would give it to you, and it never got to you. I'd have sent it through mail and everything. So I'm just asking for help, Your Honor. That's all.
Ma'am, if you would just, the woman who's right near you is my senior aide. She will take the information and make sure that I get it gets to me, and then we will respond.
Yes, ma'am, and it's a pleasure, Your Honor. I'm not going to hold your time, but I'll sit down and join the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and be blessed.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Jackie Page.
Good morning, ma'am.
I'd like to say that I think the teachers should sign the agreement. It seems as if there are other things that are afoot with this agreement that do not involve our children, and I believe our children should not be used as pawns in a game of one-upmanship. I believe that the time that the teachers should have struck was when 50 schools were closed. You were silent then, and you should not use our children. I would also like to say that I support Alderman Beal's efforts to halt the cannabis bill until a better deal is struck for the Black community. I think that you should look at the expungements. I think that you should look at the contracts, and you should look at the exemptions for who is going to be arrested. All these things need to be ferreted out before a deal is struck. Reports have indicated that arrests in the Black communities have increased in cities that have legalized cannabis, and I think that these things need to be all ferreted out and discussed before this cannabis bill is signed. I would also like to say that Chicago is a world-class city, but our public transportation this weekend failed us. I was in downtown Michigan Avenue, and it took me a ride that usually takes 30 minutes, took two hours. Our public transportation completely fell apart. Reroutes were rerouted, and pandemonium was afoot. No one knew what was going on, and I'd like to say that this marathon happens and has been happening for years now. I think that efforts should be put in place so that our public transportation runs more adequately and more smoothly. I'd lastly like to speak on the lottery. This lottery system is widely viewed as an effort to silence certain speakers. And I would like to say that your efforts have worked to galvanize and solidify. Persons who were not speaking before are now joining forces. You public speak, you Alderman, your records are being reviewed and noted, and in efforts to silence, what you've really done is brought people together and made them look more closely at you. While you try to silence certain speakers, you may not like the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. The next speaker is Mr. Kevin Slaughter.
Good morning, Your Honor, esteemed members of the council. My name is Kevin Slaughter. I'm a local attorney. I represent Viola Brands, which is the largest African-American operator in the cannabis space in the country, and a number of smaller minority-owned groups that are trying to get an application currently. Despite the best efforts of the General Assembly, its attempts to address social equity at best are flawed and actually create disadvantages for would-be minority operators in this city. And if the city waits for the state to correct those flaws, it will be too late, as would-be minority operators will be at least significantly disadvantaged and potentially barred from any meaningful participation in the industry here in the city going forward. I urge this committee to act, not to wait for the state to correct it. There are three specific things that this council can do and this city can do to help Black and Brown would-be operators. Currently, of the current 55 dispensaries, none are owned by minorities. That includes the 11 in this city. That includes the 11 in this city. The things that this city can do are three. One, those current 11 operators on January 1 are allowed to sell adult-use on day one. Any would-be minority operator is in the process of applying. Those applications aren't due to January 2. They won't get a preapproval until May. They'll have 90 days after that to find real estate and another six to nine months before they're ready to sell. Everyone should be able to sell adult-use, adult cannabis on the same day. The city should not allow any entity to sell adult-use cannabis until everyone can. The second thing that needs to be addressed is that under the current state system, it is a potential that five entities may own all 47 of the new dispensaries in the city. The city, this council should limit the number of dispensaries of those 47 that any one entity can own to three, five at the most. That way, there's a better chance that more people will be able to participate in the industry. Finally, the social equity applicant, that status, that was, the General Assembly noted that because of the 55 licenses and the 25 dispensary licenses and the 20 cultivation licenses were owned by a small number of entities, it was needed, there was a need to address the barriers to people that had been impacted, most impacted by the criminalization of cannabis, and to lower barriers for people that wanted to start a business to get into this industry. There are three criteria to be a social equity applicant. Two are based on ownership, and the last is by simply hiring employees. Hiring an employee is not a meaningful participation. Therefore, social equity applicants in this city that meet the test by ownership should be given two balls in the lottery that is conducted by the zoning board, and that will help to level the playing field. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. The next speaker is Ms. Nancy Hoffman. Nancy Hoffman?
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Hoffman. I live in the 45th Ward. I'm here to talk about the point that is being developed at the Six Corners area. Our present Alderman, James Gardner, has held a number of meetings, open meetings, to let us know what's going on in this, with this development. Years ago, when this was talked about, we were going five stories, which fit very well into the neighborhood that it is encompassing. Ten stories, we don't know where it came from. Majority of the people in the 45th Ward do not want this. Also, there are concerns about the pricing of the senior citizen housing. A lot of the senior citizens that I've talked to in the ward, including myself, and outside of the ward, do not consider this affordable housing. We're also worried about if a 10-story goes through, that this might set up a precedence for the number of other developments that are going on right now within a block or two area. At all the meetings, even previous to the Aldermanic election, nothing has been mentioned about infrastructure, which is going to have to put a big input into that neighborhood since this building, the previous bank building, was probably the original, maybe back, way back when, maybe some small housing. So people are very concerned about that, and we just think that there should be a lot more input put into this before anything starts. And maybe the developers from that point and over to the Sears point can get together and make some kind of unification so that the people that live there are not going to be affected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Ms. Rochelle Smith. Ms. Rochelle Smith? I'm sorry, Ms. Rochelle South.
I'm not going to speak. I was just saying, that was me. That was my maiden name.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. John McNulty. Mr. John McNulty.
I am John McNulty. I live in the 45th Ward. I have been there for 76 years. Jim Gardner is one person who's looking out for the older residents of the 45th Ward. Nobody was consulted about this 12-story monster that was going up. The former Alderman and the developer made plans without letting us know about it. Then he gets hired by you with a hiring freeze. I don't understand. I just don't want to see a 12-story building going up in Portage Park. Also, there are people, Mr. Schull, who lives in Old Irving Park, wants the building put up there. Why doesn't he put it up on the old Sabatino's property in Old Irving Park? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Calvin Omar Johnson.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, Mayor, I'm Mayor Light, Lori Lightfoot, and members of the City Council. My name is Calvin Omar Johnson. I'm the co-founder of the Workshop Coalition. We don't want to wear the hard helmets, the white hard helmets. Today, I decided not to wear the white hard helmet because, Mayor Lightfoot, I think you're a honorable mayor, and you stand on trust, and we believe in, we believe that you're going to stand for what you, you said you were going to stand for, and that's fairness and equity in the wars in terms of contracts. We've been protesting for the last 20 years for African-Americans to get their fair share of contracts, males and females. We have some success where we got some African-American contractors, contracts within 20 years, but we have not made enough progress. Right now, you got 75% of all contract go to white males, and 20, and the 20 are white, black wards that exist now. We got a majority now, 20 black wards, 12 Hispanic wards, and we got 18 white wards. So we made a monumental step, and I talked to my, I hope my colleagues in the City Council, African-American Aldermen would make an effort to make sure African-Americans get their fair share of contract. But there's a discrimination progress, a process going on where, with supply agreements, manufacturing, hiring, and some of the Black contractors not getting their fair share of contracts. There's some major projects going on now where you got the same contractors, Walls and Pepper and so forth and so on, but they discriminate against African-American contractor when they put their bids in because they try to low-bid them out of the process. So we've been doing, we did, we did 200 pages of evidence on how this process work. We, hopefully, you would want to sit down with us and look at this information. I know we don't have that much time to discuss it because we've been doing it for approximately 20-some years, and some of our colleagues in the City Council knows about us. So today, we just taking off the helmets. I would respect you, and you say you're the first African-American mayor to sit in this council, and you said, and you said that you wanted to see some effects in certain areas, especially in the zip codes, 20 and 24. We're not getting our fair share of contracts, and hopefully that you and your staff, if you're willing to sit down with us and look at the, look at the study that we put together and show you where the disparity is in some of these wards and where these joint contractors have discriminated against Black contractors and some of these joint venture projects, just not fair. Some of them are fraudulent, past through the front companies. So we really want to sit down with you and show you our study and all the information that we put together, and hopefully you can give us somebody in your staff to try to resolve some of these issues. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next speaker is Ms. Adara Benjamin.
Yeah, I think she's the last one on the list. Hello. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
My name is Adara Benjamin, and I'm a home care worker for Addus here in Chicago. I have been providing help for seven years, and I am proud to stand with our friends at Jane Addams Senior Caucus this morning. The bond that I have with my clients cannot be underestimated. It is a true labor of love, and I wouldn't change anything about it. Home care workers need quality pay for the work we do to meet the increase of the cost of living here in Chicago. It is important that the work takes place in a safe, stable, and familiar environment so that all seniors, regardless of race and economics, can live a life to their truest potential. Myself and all of my brothers and sisters at SEIU resoundly support the resolution to support seniors citywide here in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All speakers who have timely submitted witness slips for the public comment.
This concludes the public comment period.
A resolution from her, Honored the Mayor, Alderman Reboyes, Talia Farrow, and Gardner. Whereas during October, the United States observes Polish-American Heritage Month, a national celebration of Polish heritage, our Polish history, culture, and pride. And whereas in October, the Polish-American community celebrates the arrival of the first Polish settlers to Jamestown, Virginia in 1608, and commemorates the death of Generals Kaczmare Polaski and Taduuz Kozi Schuski, our distinguished military leaders who fought for the independence of the United States during the American Revolution. And whereas Polish people have long been an integral part of American history and culture and millions immigrated to the United States in the late 19th and early 20th centuries, bringing with them a love for independence, their culture, their new country, and value shared by Poles and Americans alike. And whereas organized Polish-American community first appeared in Chicago in the late 1860s with the establishment of Saint Stanislav Koska Parish since the 1860s, Polish immigrants have come to Chicago in four separate waves resulting from economic and political challenges at home. These immigrants brought their knowledge and ethic of hard work to developing nation, and their presence has largely shaped the Chicago we see today. Whereas the Chicago metropolitan area is now home to over 1.9 million people of Polish descent, making it the largest and most established Polish community in the world outside of Poland. Chicago's Polish population includes teachers, builders, entrepreneurs, and activists who have worked hard for their families and communities as well as their own success. And whereas the presence of Chicago's large Polish-American population is shown in a number of influential organizations such as the Polish Museum of America, the Polish American Association, the Polish National Alliance, and the Polish Highlander's Alliance in North America. And whereas recognizing the impact of Polish-Americans on the city's development, Chicago made Warsaw its first sister city in 1960. This relationship has helped build connections between each city's business, artistic communities, as well as encourage tourism. And whereas Chicago's history and cultural wealth have been shaped and enriched by Polish-Americans and their commitment to helping our city a better place to live, work, and raise families. And whereas the city's Polish heritage can be seen all over Chicago, on street signs and parks and on schools, the heritage is our past, our present, and our future. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, assembled this 16th day of October 2019, do hereby celebrate October as Polish-American Heritage Month and recognize the many and substantial contributions that Polish-Americans have made to both the development to our nation and to the City of Chicago.
Alderman Reboyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. The Polish community has been an integral part of American history and culture for over 400 years. Millions of our Polish ancestors immigrated to the United States in the late 19th and 20th centuries, bringing with them a fierce love for independence, their culture, and their new country. We see that pride of culture and history in our own Buffalo Polonia and in many Polish-American institutions that exist here in Chicago. I know, because I have the Alliance of Polish Clubs in my ward, 39 organizations. I want to acknowledge a friend of mine that's here today, President Frank Spula, who just got elected again, and we honor you, thank you for your support and your staff that's here with you, but I have to say something that you'll understand very well. Dzień dobry. Do zacisk uznacz, znacz, spowicz noć polsko-americanska. Dziękuję ci, Boże, Bogosław. Thank you, and God bless.
The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I can't top what Ariel Reboyes just said, but I would just say that I am very proud to be Alderman in the 29th Ward, which has a vast Polish community and a very vibrant Polish community. It is very noticeable in the 29, how they stand on their traditions and on their history. You can see it in the businesses and the families that they raise, and so I want to congratulate you on this Polish National Heritage Month and say, as Ariel would say, dziękuję. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Gardner?
I too stand in support of this resolution, and like Alderman Reboyes had said, I want to congratulate President Frank Spula for all the work you have done in the community. I'm very proud to be Alderman of the 45th Ward, and obviously, the Polish community has had a huge impact in our area, in Jefferson Park, Gladstone Park, Portage Park, and I cannot thank you enough. I would not be sitting here if it wasn't for the strong people in the Polish community to help support me run. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Frank. Frank and me have been friends since I've been in all, congratulations, everybody. I'm sorry, I don't mean to just direct it towards Frank, but Frank and me kind of hit it off pretty good about eight years ago, and they continue to see him at many Polish functions, so I just appreciate all you do for our community, your community, so God bless you and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Alderman Sikchow Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, we'd like to congratulate the Polish community. I should actually sign on the resolution. My wife is half-Polish, so I want to make sure that I'm on record, making sure that she, I don't hear at home. So I want to congratulate you also as the Alderman of the Pilsen community, being really thankful for your efforts of preservation of San Adab in particular. So very proud, you know, to have a Polish wife. So thank you so much, and congrats.
Alderman Sikchow Lopez is subscribing to the saying that happy wife, happy life. I also stand with the entire body of the City Council to speak on this resolution, and I want to offer greetings to my friends from the Polish community and particularly Chairman Spula. Though we honor Polish Heritage Month in October, our Polish heritage is something that we celebrate in Chicago all year round. As some of you know, Warsaw is one of Chicago's 28 sister cities, and I believe the very first sister city, and well, next year, we will be celebrating 60 years of that relationship. And I want to unpack, recognize Konrad Nowak, who is the Chair of the Warsaw City Sister Committee. In May, we host a parade for Polish Constitution Day. In the summer, we take part in the Taste of Polonia in Jefferson Park, and I was proud to be in attendance, and can probably tell I eat my fair share of Polish sausage and pierogies. In every March, we celebrate Kaczmare Polaski Day, the father of the American cavalry who gave his life so our nation could be free. It's that Polish spirit we proudly hold across Chicago, and it's those endearing bonds that tie together a great city and a great country. With Chicago's Polish community exceeding 130,000 and expanding to nearly 700,000 across the Chicago metro area, this city represents the fourth-largest Polish city in the world, separated by thousands of miles but connected across countless lines of culture, history, and friendship. Our Polish heritage is our city's heritage. It has shaped our city since its earliest days. And in a great city that welcomes and respects immigrants from every nation and culture across the globe, that special relationship exists between Chicago and Poland, which is as strong as ever. Chicago's Polish heritage is our past, our present, and our future, and I'm proud to stand with this council in honoring that heritage today. Thank you so much for being with us. Madam Clerk.
A resolution from her honor the mayor, City Clerk Valencia Alderman Dow, King, Hairston, Harris-Salowski-Garza, Coleman, Taylor, Taboris, Rodriguez Sanchez, Austin Mitz, Nugent, Smith, Haddon, and Silverstein. Whereas the United States observes National Breast Cancer Awareness Month each year from October 1st through October 31st to recognize the courage and strength of over 3 million Americans who are battling this deadly medical condition, those who have lost their lives to breast cancer, and all those whose lives have been affected by it. And whereas more than 268,000 women and 2,000 men are expected to be diagnosed with new cases of invasive breast cancer in 2019. And whereas women are at higher risk for breast cancer, especially those with a family history of breast cancer or those who are older. And whereas breast cancer remains the second-most common form of cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths overall among American women with over 41,000 lives lost each year. And whereas approximately one out of every eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and one case of breast cancer is diagnosed approximately every two minutes. And whereas at early detection and regular screenings, mammograms followed by timely treatment upon diagnosis can significantly improve a patient's chance of survival. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month began in October of 1985 to promote mammograms as the most effective test for the early detection of breast cancer, and has since evolved into collaboration of nonprofit organizations, professional medical associations, and government agencies working together to promote breast cancer awareness. And whereas the pink ribbon has become an international symbol of breast cancer awareness and solidarity for people affected by the disease, and several landmark buildings have been illuminated pink during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas breast cancer deaths have been declining since 1989, likely due to early detection, but better screening, increased awareness, and new treatment options. And whereas the Breast Cancer Awareness Month has been a tremendous success, leading to far more Chicagoans receiving screenings and treatment and ultimately leading to fewer premature deaths, now therefore, be it resolved that we, mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago assembled this 16th day of October 2019 to hereby designate the 31-day period beginning on October 1st and ending on October 31st as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Chicago. Salute all who are involved in the fight to end breast cancer and encourage all Chicagoans to raise awareness of the symptoms and treatment of this disease in pursuit of a better, healthier future.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I rise today in support of this resolution for breast cancer awareness. As you all will see, my colleagues are wearing pink in support of breast cancer awareness, and some are wearing purple in support of domestic violence awareness. Breast cancer affects both men and women, as we all know. And so I just wanted to make sure that we brought to the forefront the importance of getting your mammogram, and this means the men too, and acknowledging this. I don't think that there are any of us that have not been touched by breast cancer. I would like to acknowledge some of my sisters on the council, Ginger Rugai, Pat Dow, Carrie Austin, and Lorraine Dixon. I would also like to recognize some other family members and friends, Dr. Kyle Wade, who we lost last week after a long struggle with breast cancer, Phyllis Hambrick, Misha Smith, Marcia Hairston, Mary Jean Hairston Cole, and Deborah Sawyer. And I would also like to acknowledge on behalf of domestic violence, my childhood friend Dejaris Gleason, who will always be remembered. Thank you.
Alderman Madonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A rising support as well on this resolution. I know how tragic it could be being a member of a family or seeing a loved one suffering from breast cancer or any other form of cancer. My wife passed over three years ago to pancreatic cancer, which next month is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and to the extent that I can be of support to any loved one that is going or have gone through the loss of a loved one as a result of any form of cancer, I'm here to support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of the resolution as well, and I would like to mention a wonderful woman in my ward. Her name is Melissa Boratyn. She has stage IV breast cancer, and she created this incredible film called Ginger to educate people and bring awareness to the journey that women have to go through with breast cancer. And I want to mention her today, mention her family, make them present in this space, and next month, I will be introducing a resolution to congratulate them in their film, because I think it is really important that we all are aware of what this journey is and support each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. As a breast cancer survivor, I was very silent about what happened to me when this first... when I first discovered it, had not paid attention to taking mammograms, was so busy working that I didn't pay attention to the signs. And so I think now I have found my voice over the last few years, and I just urge women out there not to take for granted their health, not to throw themselves into work so much that you begin to ignore your health, and to always get your screenings whenever you can. Don't ignore them, and this is the month that we get a chance to talk about that, and so I urge women out there, those that are within this council, those that are just watching, to get that breast screening that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. One in eight women in the United States will develop breast cancer over their lifetime, and more than 268,000 women and 2,000 men being diagnosed with breast cancer this year alone. Each of us can say we know someone or know of someone who has battled this disease. For over 30 years now, our nation has come together during the month of October to turn those numbers around, and we've succeeded. In the four years following the start of Breast Cancer Awareness Month in 1985, deaths related to the disease began to decline, thanks in large part to raise awareness, leading to early detection. And since 1989, deaths from breast cancer have fallen by 40%, but those numbers are still too high, particularly among African-American women. This month, as we don the pink ribbons and celebrate how much we've accomplished, let's also remember how far we have to go. But we can and will beat this, because together, we have more than enough strength to fight this battle and win. Thank you for all you're doing, and I join the other speakers to urge women, please get tested. It's a simple procedure, and it will save your life. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate adoption consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I move adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the Honibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell.
I now move we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
A series of communications from around the mayor to the honorable, the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan redevelopment agreement and provision of affordable housing tax credits for Roosevelt Road Veterans Housing. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease and license agreement with Taking Flight Concessions LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing a grant of Neighborhood Opportunity Funds for Madland Industries LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with ordinances authorizing a scope of service, budget, and management agreement for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for property located at 6843 South Harper. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property at 724 through 726 North Kedzie. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Executive Director of Emergency Management and Communications, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing adoption of the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director and the Corporation Council, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of interim agreements with Units 156, Sergeants, Lieutenants, and Captains. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to the Illinois International Port District Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. City Clerk Valencia hereby informs the City Council that the following document was filed in her office, Inspector General's Quarterly Report for the period ending September 30th, 2019. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that all those ordinances which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on September 18th, 2019, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on October 16th, 2019, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council. City Clerk Valencia also transmits here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action, zoning classifications of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and claims against the City of Chicago which are referred to Committee on Finance.
Alderman Tunnings, zoning.
Madam President and members of the City Council reporting on your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, for which the committee met on October 15th, 2019, and reconvened this morning, and has the following items that it recommends the City Council pass. Item number one is A 2019-73, which is the appointment of Maurice Cox as the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I'll reserve my motion until all our colleagues wish to speak, have done so. And is there anyone that would like to speak on the appointment?
Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to commend you for your appointment of Mr. Cox. Having met with him and talked to him in length, he gets the message, he understands what we need to do in order to bring economic developments to the south and west side of Chicago. I told him also, we need some investors out there in the area. They can take money from the area but don't want to put it back in the area. So, Mr. Cox, we're so grateful to have you, not only for myself, but I'll say, all of us are looking forward to working with you to make sure that we help to create an economic engine for both west and south side of Chicago. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Reboyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I too thank you for this appointment, because I believe that Mr. Cox is the real deal. He's been exposed to numerous, numerous occupational job situations in various cities, in particular, New York, and I welcome you, because that's my hometown, but Chicago is where I reside, and I know that you're going to make history for us moving forward with your success that you've done in the past, and we welcome that. So, thank you, Madam.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to say that I think this is a stellar appointment. I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Cox about the Planning Department, and we've had some good conversations. He's very thoughtful, it appears, about the role of the corporate and philanthropic community in the planning and development process. He seems very focused on looking at economic development through a strategic, community-based lens, and I look forward to him adding more planning flavor to the department, which has been missing over the years. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this appointment. I have researched Mr. Cox for all the work that he has done, and I think this is a stellar appointment, and I think he is going to do a fabulous job bringing his team and his leadership to the City of Chicago, because I believe that he understands what we need to stop the bleeding of money going outside the City of Chicago. So, Your Honor, I really appreciate you finding Mr. Cox, and we look forward to working with him. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I definitely rise to support this appointment. I don't think in the time that I've been on council that I ever rose to say I agree with an appointment from the mayor, but in my conversations with Mr. Cox, I do think that for what Chicago needs at this time, this young man brings it to the table, and we look forward to working with you and seeing what somebody that has been out there and has been exposed to some of the things that we have in Chicago can do, and once again, look forward to working with you. Mayor, great, great, great appointment.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this appointment. I am actually excited about the prospective opportunities that we are going to work on together to help inject into our neighborhoods the things that we need to do. As I said to you yesterday, you know, most people don't realize, and it's a heads-up that people eat every day, but in my communities and communities that don't have grocery stores, you would think that people don't have the need to eat every day. And so to make that not just an awareness, but to make that a focal point...
And so, to make that not just an awareness, but to make that a focal point in talking with corporations as they think, it's about really, again, as I said yesterday, changing a corporate mindset. And, you know, our dollars are green, they spend the same way, you know, they track us by our area codes, they track us by our zip codes, yet they don't invest in our neighborhoods. And so, when you talk about innovative things like linking development, I think it makes good sense, I think it makes good sense for Chicago. I think your history and your experience will bring a lot, and, you know, once you make some changes in the department, I think we're off and running in a good direction. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Good to join my colleagues and thanking you for this appointment. After conversations with Mr. Cox, I am completely blown away, not only by the qualifications, but also the fact that I believe we share a North Star in really having a more equitable city. So, for someone coming from the north side of town, having conversations about how we bring in affordable housing and how we also use arts and culture to help grow our city really spoke to me, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
President, I too want to commend you on this appointment. Detroit's loss is our gain. I think Mr. Cox, in his vast-
That's exactly what I said to the City of Detroit Mayor Duggan.
His experience is how do we grow communities? It's not what we do in the West Loop or downtown or in the shadows of City Hall, it's what do we do in the 77 neighborhoods of the City of Chicago? And he's going to help work with us. I appreciate the fact that he's a former elected official, he's walked in our shoes before, he knows what partnership means. And to get us all to move our neighborhoods in the right direction, we have to work together. It's not one person. I look at this appointment also in the context of the other appointments you've made with Commissioner Navarro in Housing. Later in our Housing Committee, we have Angela Herlock, who's appointed to lead CHA, your Equity Officer Candace Moore. All of these things are working to move our city in a right, more equitable direction, and I want to commend you on that. And lastly, I want to say, you know, Mr. Cox today, he didn't roll up in a big fancy car from Detroit, he pedaled his way to City Hall. So, he's helping our carbon footprint, too.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Talking to Mr. Cox, I think, last week, you know, just his ideas around what urban Chicago should look like, his ideas around how to generate business in our communities was refreshing. And I appreciate the fact that he comes from a big city, has done many travels across our country in different capacities, all while trying to better urban communities. I appreciate the fact that he understands what the west and south sides need, and even before he was appointed, is working towards that fact. You know, I think he's even on my calendar sometime in the near future to come out and look at North Flondale and those areas that we know need that investment. And so, I appreciate you having someone who knows what it takes to get the job done, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you so much for this appointment. I'm really excited when I look back at Mr. Cox's work in Detroit. To see what we are building in Chicago is exciting because we're not just talking about one appointment towards an equitable city. I look at Teresa Cordova, I look at Guacolda Reyes and others who are joining the Plan Commission, who bring this strong equity mindset to planning, who understand that a city is built of holistic communities that include the parks, the affordable housing, the jobs-oriented development that it takes for all of our neighborhoods to succeed. And being a voice with you in my capacities to help build that city is something I'm looking forward to over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Madam President, I want to commend you on bringing forward this very excellent appointment to head our Department of Planning and Development. In speaking with Mr. Cox at the meeting that we had with the Latino Caucus and with yourself this past week, I was really excited to hear him talk about the work he's been doing as he prepares to enter into this role, reaching out to communities, meeting with individuals in the neighborhoods. Chicago is a city of neighborhoods, as I'm sure you've already learned. And as you know, there are so many brilliant people in our neighborhoods, and as you spoke about, that have already engaged in the process of participatory planning processes, where they talk about what it is that they would like to see in their neighborhood. So, I'm so happy to hear you talk about, you know, that specificity of each neighborhood, the level of expertise that they've built up there, the planning processes that they've engaged in, and your commitment to now work with them on moving forward on some of those plans that they've already put in place. I also thought it was really great to hear you talk about the necessity to really reassess our commercial corridors, and understanding that much of the retail that has been lost is not coming back. And how can we be creative about revitalizing those streets, those corridors, and those neighborhoods, but in a fashion that is congruent with the realities of the 21st century? So, I fully support this appointment. I think it was an excellent choice and look forward to working with you in the months and years to come to make Chicago the great city that it is, and really, in many ways, the birthplace of planning. So, welcome to the City of Chicago.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Alderman Tony for that marathon zoning meeting yesterday and for allowing everyone to get up and ask the questions of Mr. Cox, make sure that everyone had those questions answered, I think, in a fruitful way from Mr. Cox. When you look at the dichotomies between what happens in the neighborhoods in Detroit, we have similar issues here. And I had the opportunity to be in Detroit this summer, where I got to see the work that Mr. Cox had committed to in the different neighborhoods, and there's been a lot of successes there, and I think you can transfer those to Chicago as we move forward. So, seeing your success there in Detroit, you know, and hoping for the same thing here, I think you're going to have a great opportunity here, working with the different community members, working with the Aldermen, trying to work around some of the issues that we have in terms of Aldermanic prerogative. That was an issue that came up yesterday. But I wish you all the best as you move forward, and want to thank you for committing to Chicago in your next endeavor. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too joined this resolution and its great appointment. I know that we did not connect on the phone, and we tried many, many times, but I texted you and told you that I was with you. I read so much about you, I read your profile, some of the great work you did in Detroit, and some of the thinking. I heard you in committee talking about some of the things that you see right away that need addressing. Commercial corridors, as one of my colleagues talked about it. But a great insight, just to know that right away, you can see the field and what needs to be tackled. And I think it's just refreshing to see a professional that knows what worked someplace else, coming into a city like ours, so dynamic and diverse, with so many things to offer. Yet, we have a problem. We have a problem in communities that, you know, we're not seeing a reinvestment effort as we should see because, you know, people in the shopping patterns are not dissimilar, not dissimilar from other communities. They want the same thing. They want those great options, they have a cup of coffee and something light, and something to take home, the groceries. We all want fresh, we all want something edible that we can take home and be proud of and feed to our children. We all want the same thing, and yet, it's not there. And that's something that, it hurts to say this, and it hurts to understand why we can't get to that. And I know you're going to be part of that solution, we're going to keep trying. Our efforts are there, our hearts there to do the right thing, and I'm just glad that you're here to be part of that process, to be part of that campaign. Thank you so much.
Alderman Tony?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said, as was said, a lot has been said in regards to Maurice Cox, and what an excellent resume that includes international exposure, and also Charlottesville, Virginia, Detroit, and others. So, what was interesting, I think, both in the Economic Development Committee and the Planning Committee, is the fact that you have been an Alderman, so you know that politics plays an important role in planning. There are 50 Aldermen, and there are 77 communities, and I know you don't know all of them, but I know that your effort, whether it's your bike or your sedan, so to speak, will be engaging with each and every one of us on what is in the best interests of the city and also the local community. And I think, as a number of Aldermen have said, there have been neighborhoods that have been forgotten. I think the other thing that's important in your comments were that what we need to do is stem the loss of population in this city. We're going through census, and this has not been a good 20 years of people staying in the city and bringing new entrants into the city, and there are certain communities that have benefited in the last number of years, and I think my community has with the influx of young people. But we need people of all ages and all stripes and backgrounds to engage and make this the great American city that we know it is. And I know that's very, very important to you, and I also wanted to comment that your professorial career is important, but between the two committee meetings, a lot of neighborhoods want action now. We've been talking, they've been talked, they've been processed, and nothing has happened. And I know that you and the mayor know that this is a city for the southwest and northside, and I wish you well, and I know that it is a different direction, Mayor, in regards to the Planning Department, and I wish you well and stay healthy. And-
I think one of your other colleagues, Alderman Mononado, did you want to speak?
Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak on this nomination. Commissioner Cox, I have to tell you, you have impressed the hell out of me. I met with you not too long ago with Norwegian American Hospital. The degree of engagement that you demonstrated in that meeting to, for a project in a neighborhood that really needs that type of health development was really amazing. It's a refreshing view of how the Department of Planning is looking at developments in neighborhoods vis-à-vis downtown. Thank you so much. Thank you for your nomination, Alderman.
I think we've got Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I also want to commend you on this appointment. I had the opportunity to have a conversation and to be in a meeting, several meetings with Commissioner Cox. Very impressive, very impressive background. I appreciate the fact that he was a former mayor himself. He worked in government. He actually was telling me about how he worked for a group that looked at challenges in development for cities across the country, which he troubleshoot on, and so, it gives us a person in place who have a large point of view of developments across the country, what's best practices are, what we can do to leverage development in some of our underserved areas in our city. I actually happen to have been in a meeting with him with the Wild Mile, with the Chicago River, and him and I happen to be the only black guys in that meeting, and he stood up in that meeting and he told everyone he thought this was a good plan, but he wanted them to look more on doing things in minority communities and enhancing areas where people are under privilege along the river. And I thought that was very refreshing for him to be able to articulate that in a professional manner, but also without any apologies, to be fair, about injustice. So, I think he's going to do great. I look forward to working with him, and I support this appointment.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
I'd like to concur with my colleagues in the excellent appointment that we've been presented of Mr. Cox for our Chair of our Planning and Development. You know, I think it was said earlier that you share a North Star with many of us when it comes to development, as far as being community-focused, being focused on resident and neighborhood engagements. I think those are perspectives that we sorely need, and I'm glad that you'll be bringing that to the city. We have an amazing city. I'm really hopeful that you become a Bears fan soon. We'll have to make sure to work on that. But I'm also very interested in bringing you to our community and showing you around, and I'm looking forward to that happening very soon.
I thought you were going to say gateway to midway. That's the mantra, everyone's saying it.
We'd love to have you on Cisro Avenue, to the gateway to midway. Is that good, Mayor? Said it twice.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you. I too rise to support this appointment and look forward to a change in direction for the Department of Planning and Development with more focus on the planning. It's very tempting, in the environment that Aldermen work in, that there's always a deal that someone wants to do. But we need, as a city, to take a more closer look at what's best for our neighborhoods and what's best for our city at the whole. And I really applaud your focus in that regard and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't repeat everything that everybody said, but I just wanted to make sure I was on record for letting the mayor know that this is a great appointment. The fact that you have a commitment, first of all, the mayor has a commitment to rebuild the south and the west sides, but you believe in the neighborhoods as well. But I just want to go on record, as I did at the committee. Anybody know about Chicago, when they're talking about Chicago, good, I mean, the bad stuff, everything, say Inglewood, Inglewood. I tell you, things happen in other neighborhoods, and they say Inglewood. And so, when we're developing, it's important that we look at Inglewood and help redevelop the Inglewood community, and I appreciate our meetings that we've already had, and I look forward to working with you even closely. I definitely commend the mayor on this appointment. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend, I'd stand in resolution, stand in this resolution, I'd like to commend the mayor for finding this gentleman as well. I commend you on the work that you've done all throughout Detroit. I had an opportunity to go through Detroit primarily on the south and the west sides. I commend you for that as well. I simply ask that you lean on people who are from the south and the west sides because they will know it best. I look forward to working with you with issues that I have in the 45th Ward. I hope that we can have a good relationship, and I wish you luck.
I think this is now you, Alderman Tony.
Can I get the mic back?
You got it back.
All right. So, Madam President, I move passage of this item by a voice vote.
Hearing no objection, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I want to thank the members of the City Council, both for your vote and your thoughtful comments about the need to bring economic development to our neighborhoods. You know, this is a value that I deeply share. As I've said time and again, it is the time that the city focuses on development that is directed throughout every community into areas that have been overlooked for decades, especially communities of color, especially neighborhoods on the west and the south sides. Maurice Cox is incredibly qualified to help create a city where development addresses the fundamental needs of every neighborhood, ensuring equity is at the foundation of our decisions. And Maurice has a track record of doing just that. In Detroit, Maurice created a new Resident-Centered Planning and Development Department that led the city's revitalization through innovative urban planning strategies that champion the equitable redevelopment of neighborhoods. As an educator, he has taught at Syracuse University, the University of Virginia, Harvard University's Graduate School of Design, and served as Associate Dean for Community Engagement at Tulane University. He's also served as a Director of the Tulane City Center in New Orleans. He served as a Mayor of Virginia and held various other key roles in Charlottesville, including Chair of Housing and Development Authority Commission, Chair of Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization, and Chair of the Mayor's Task Force on Urban Housing Policy. Our city's Department of Planning and Development is charged with promoting the comprehensive growth and sustainability of Chicago and its neighborhoods, overseeing the city's zoning and land use policies, and employing a variety of resources to encourage business and real estate development, historic preservation, accessible waterfronts, walkable neighborhoods, and much more. And I know Maurice's past experiences make him the ideal person that the Department of Planning and Development needs now more than ever to truly meet this awesome and important mission, to stop the practices of investing here but not there, to strengthen equality of life for all residents regardless of zip code, to end business as usual, and to be an advocate for equitable development. I want to thank you again. Welcome, Commissioner, and now it's time for us to get to work. And now it's time for us to get to work.
Next item is document number 020196926, which is a substitute ordinance amending Title 17 regarding cannabis-related activities. Again, I'll reserve my motion until after my colleagues have wished to speak, speak on the substitute ordinance.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise in total opposition to this cannabis ordinance. When you look at the way this ordinance is being rolled out, we know first and foremost that Springfield failed to address some of the important issues as it relates to equity in the black and brown community. However, we in this body have home rule, and we have the ability to right the wrong that Springfield has done. When we look at the fact that the black and brown community has been adversely affected by the cannabis industry, jails have been filled up, people have been locked up, and now we are being locked out of benefiting from this particular ordinance. How do we look in this great city, allowing cannabis to be rolled out with 22 licenses, all owned by people who are not of color coming out of the gate? How do we start a game already down 22 to nothing? That is a travesty. All we're asking is for us to take a step back before we move forward in order to get it right. We're not opposed to this ordinance. We know it's coming. We know it's happening. We want the revenue. We get that. But at what expense? The black community has been fighting forever for equality. We have been fighting forever to make sure we just get a piece of the pie. And here we are with an industry being rolled out, and we can't get nothing out of this ordinance. Something is wrong with that picture, ladies and gentlemen. Something is really wrong. Yesterday, we stayed here till 11:45. We got all the way, we ran 100-yard dash, got all the way to the finish line and dropped the ball. Because we have an opportunity to right this wrong. We have an opportunity to make sure our community can for once get a piece of the pie. I guarantee you when these ordinances, when these licenses are rolled out and the first 22 are people not of color, they are going to have 12-month head start before we even start trying to level the playing field. How do we do that? How do we let somebody get a 12-month head start before anybody else can even get in the game? Now, I want to, I really want to applaud the Black Caucus yesterday for fighting tooth and nail, but we didn't finish the fight. We needed to make sure that our community was included with these licenses before they get rolled out. We wouldn't have lost any revenue. We wouldn't have lost any momentum if we had just waited, leveled the playing field so people of color can get a piece of the pie. That's all we were asking. And so here we are today, rolling out an ordinance. Once again, we're going to be trying to catch up because we're already being left out. And so because of that, Madam President, I will be voting no on this ordinance.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. As we stayed here late last night trying to get this thing right, it was more, it wasn't the zoning issue that's the problem. It's the equity piece. This thing only comes once in a lifetime almost, where we can gain some ground finally in this city as African-Americans. Growing up in Robert Taylor Home Projects, moving to Inglewood, day after day, I seen friends of mine get locked up for little pieces of marijuana. And the very thing that they got locked up for, they're about to make it legal, and nobody, I mean, nobody black is out the gate on it. We had a young man, I think Mr. Kevin Slaughter, he spoke. I mean, you can't have a stronger voice than that. I think everybody wants this ordinance, everybody wants this to move. But we don't have to just rush it through. There's an opportunity that I've now gotten calls from my state senator, staying with this, you guys need to hold this. So if my state senator is saying that, maybe she felt that was something they didn't do right down there. Maybe she's something they didn't finish down there. And we have to bring everybody to the table. I'm hard pressed to believe that anybody want to come up here and sue the city because we're fighting for equity. We're not saying others can't play in the game, others can't be a part of it. We're saying, how can we get in? The other piece is that a lot of these people that's going to have the dispensaries also are the ones that's growing in. You know how it is with ComEd and other people. You can, you can buy and go get somebody else's electricity, but they're the supplier, they'll never win. Your rates steady go up when you try to get those other guys thinking you're getting a lower rate. So it's the suppliers that own dispensaries that are going to be supplying even some of the black folks that have dispensaries. There's so much to look at. When you look at the lottery piece, they're saying that's equal, but it's not equitable. You put 44 balls, white balls in there and one black ball in there, what's the probability that black ball getting chosen? This stuff is real, you all. I know for a fact that the mayor that I supported has the heart, she wants to do this. But we have to help caucus. I'm calling on my Black Caucus to just stand with me. If we got to take another day and we come back, we take a day and come back, but let's agree to do that. Because there's something, there's too many people calling me. David, I'm just dressed up dirt that can be thrown away at any time. But when everybody calling, that's because you're talking about somebody's money now, but it's not our money. And so the way it is now, I cannot support it because it's no equity. The zoning is right, but no equity. And the zoning is our only leverage. And so I cannot support this ordinance the way it's written today.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with about 95% of what has been stated. You are correct, there is an issue here around the equity basis of this. However, we need to understand one thing. Without zoning, January 1st, these things can go anywhere, with the exception of what the state has excluded, which is within 500 or 1,000, you could correct me on that number, of within being, within a school and not in a residential district. So all of that land that's not that means that it can go there. It can go without any special use process where the community can have a voice to weigh in. All of those things get tossed out of the window if we do not pass on any form of zoning. I agree with you that there is, there are issues of equity in this conversation. There is no question, there is no doubt. I stand 100% on that. But what I do not want to see is these places opening in portions of our community or anywhere in the city that the local community, the Alderman, and the city of Chicago do not want them to be. Now, the state has given us some flexibility in the zoning process. Again, the vehicle for equity will come in a different form. However, if we do not pass on zoning, we will forego the ability to say where they will go anywhere in our city. So if you want to have one right downstairs or across the street, then it's fine under, under, under the state statute. If you want to have one next door to a church, it's fine under the state statute. If you want to have one next door to a daycare center, it's fine under the state statute. We have the ability to regulate where these items go. Now, we've fought hard with the changes from where we started to from, to where we are today. We want to thank the mayor's staff, and Paul especially, for working with and going back and forth with us over this issue. But I think to not have any regulation on this matter would put us in much greater jeopardy than we are in today. So with that, I encourage us to have a zoning framework that most of us have agreed to and understand, and we will deal with the issue of equity. I believe firmly that no one in this room wants any community, especially the African-American community that's been so impacted by this, to be left out. That is not the case. But again, if we decide not to deal on zoning, we will open ourselves up for these things to go where you don't want them. And I think the rules that have been put in place have given us the ability to make that direction as a city, as a community, locally, working with the Zoning Board of Appeals, working with the City Council, so that we can have something that makes sense for our communities. Because without it, again, we have no regulation and no place other than what the state statute says that they could go. So with that, I would encourage everyone to support the zoning today, and we will deal on the issue of equity. Thank you.
Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this ordinance, and I know my colleague, Alderman Irvin, spoke to the need for compromise and the level of frustration that exists in this room with the Illinois statute that was passed last spring. I think, however, that frustration is misdirected at the city when it should be, in fact, aimed at Springfield. I think that most of the state law is excellent, and I commend the sponsors in the legislature for passing it. But I do think that there is an opportunity during the fall veto session for us as a council to join together and oppose upon our elected state representatives and state senators to make some tweaks and adjustments to build some more equity into the state law. That is the venue where this can happen. The way the state law was crafted, it very strictly limits what we can do as a city. And by and large, it's related to zoning and where these things can be cited. And we've had, I think, a really robust debate over the last three weeks. Each of us has a different opinion on cannabis and where it's appropriate in our respective wards. And I think that came out during this process. I think that the mayor and her staff have had a very difficult job trying to build consensus around a brand-new issue that none of us have tackled before, and I think they've really tried to listen and get things right. I think the administration is also, I don't speak for the mayor, but I think the administration is also frustrated with some of the constraints that have been put upon us by the state. I think there's an opportunity here, a team effort, working with the administration, to make those appropriate changes. But that said, I think it would be a mistake for us to delay the implementation of recreational cannabis in Chicago. It was mentioned, these incumbents, these medical marijuana retailers that exist today in Chicago, whether we like it or not, whether we do anything or not, come January 1st, those folks, by state law, get to start selling recreational cannabis. We cannot prevent that from happening in the city of Chicago, period. The great irony, the great irony, by delaying the zoning implementation in the city of Chicago, is that we have a whole slew of minority-owned business owners who are in the process of filing applications with the state to come here and compete as minority-owned businesses, as cultivators, and as dispensaries. Those are the people who will be negatively impacted by delaying a zoning ordinance. The incumbents get a head start. They're going to start selling this stuff January 1. The new entrance, it'll be months before they get in here. But those are the folks who were sitting and zoning until 8 o'clock last night, watching how these proceedings went. Those are the folks who have put money on the barrel, a lot of time and effort into trying to build minority-owned businesses. And so while I appreciate the sentiment from my colleagues who are concerned about this issue, I am too, I think that's the wrong approach on this particular ordinance. I've been in the paper a little bit about this issue myself. Alderman Hopkins and I represent big chunks of downtown. I've been of the opinion that we should have a more permissive policy, because for me, it's about the revenue that the city desperately needs. And there are different numbers floating around on revenue projections. I would argue that that revenue number is a bit higher. But either way, we are staring into a fiscal abyss. And every dollar that we leave on the table with cannabis revenue is one we need to look at raising somewhere else. And so that is my selfish interest on behalf of my taxpayers, to do anything possible to avoid that terrible outcome. So again, I respect all my colleagues and our differing opinions. It has not been a fun process, Mayor, as you know. But I also would encourage folks to remember that this is an ordinance that can be tweaked and changed over time. And I suspect as we go through our growing pains with the recreational industry in Chicago, we'll have opportunities to do that. But if we really want to move the needle on issues like equity, which are incredibly important, let's spend that time and energy where it needs to be focused, and that is in Springfield during the fall veto session. So Mayor, I offer to help lead a delegation to Springfield to speak with our legislators and ask for help on this issue, because I agree with my colleagues, there's a lot of room for improvement when it comes to equity in the state cannabis law. That said, I'll be voting yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand reluctantly to support this. I have family in Oregon and Washington State where cannabis is legal and it's just not a big deal. I believe in 10 years, we'll be laughing about the restrictions that we have here in the, in the state of Illinois and the city of Chicago. I also am concerned about the harmful effects of institutional racism that plagues this country and plagues this city. So I applaud the work of the Black Caucus and the work that they've done. I have learned that oftentimes when I see one, especially the African-American community and the Latinx community, when they stand together on something, it gives me pause as a white man, a privilege to, to hear what they have to say. What they have to say is something that I can't easily see myself as someone who's white and who is male. But this, this is very trying times, and I believe that we've found some common ground to really work diligently to advance the efforts to legalize cannabis here in the city of Chicago, at the same time paying very, very close attention to the harmful effects of institutional racism that plagues the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Alderman Tony.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot has been said in regards to the implementation of recreational cannabis coming January 1. I want to highlight a couple of comments that were made today, and obviously, we did a number of meetings around the city. And I think Alderman Irvin, as much as we've bought and tossed around yesterday, got it right in the sense that this is a zoning ordinance. The state is first and foremost the licensing apparatus for this. And the rules were made down there, whether the rules need to be amended. I know the mayor and a number of us would like to have had more input earlier, but we're at a place where we control the zoning. As Alderman Irvin says, it's coming. We need to make sure that we have the right locations, the number, and address the social equity piece on a different level. You know, zoning is really non-discriminatory about who gets what, when, and where. And I think, as Alderman Irvin said, this first and foremost is a zoning ordinance, and I hope that we can continue to work on improving. Alderman Kapelman said, you know, we're not happy. Alderman Riley and I, trust me, we almost nixed out my entire ward with this ordinance because it's not going to be on the business streets or the Lower C Districts. So this is an incremental ordinance. I think we've got a lot of growing to do, no pun intended. And as Alderman Beal says, his rollout, you know, a lot has been said. But I really think that this is a first step on how this is going to be implemented citywide. And I would hope that we can count on your vote and also count on your support to continue to evolve this legislation with Springfield. You know, we probably should have been down there earlier, working with our state reps about how the licensing would impact minority ownership, because that's what we heard. That's what we heard in the communities. You know, this leg up on the initial 11 plus 1, those rules were made down in Springfield. And I think what we're doing is, as Alderman Irvin said, we are limiting, we are very much limiting with this substitute ordinance, the places where these can go. So I think as we continue to work on this together with Springfield and with ourselves, that we're going to find, hopefully, a lot more minority ownership interests, having an opportunity to invest, not just in the ownership part, but I also think you have realized, the expungement issue is really, really important also. And I think they got that right in terms of these low-level offenses being, hopefully, erased from people's records so they can live normal lives moving forward without this mark on their records. So again, this is not the end-all, be-all or the panacea, but I think this is something that we really need to pass today and continue to work with Springfield moving this forward. So I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this. Okay, then we have a roll call.
The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Lasparra. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis, oh, sorry. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Seijo Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spassato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vascas. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ostrman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
The vote is 40 yays and 10 nays. Alderman Thompson.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Fails, sorry.
Mayor, I forgot one item that I wanted to thank personally, you, for your leadership. But also, Paul Stewart is here, Steve Valenciano, and Patrick Murphy did a yeoman's job in getting this passed today. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say a few words in the interest of time. There's a lot of conversation in this chamber about equity. I support that. And as I've indicated multiple times to many of you in the conversations that we've had, I will be your partner in joining and addressing equity issues where they can be addressed, which is in Springfield. It's important, as Alderman Irvin said and Alderman Tunny said, that we have a zoning structure, because the law goes live on January 1st, whether we like it or not, and we have to have some structure and controls around when, where, and how these cannabis operations for recreational are going to be placed. I appreciate the spirit of cooperation and compromise that has brought us to this point. I think it's a good example of what should be happening in this legislative body, and I commend the Black Caucus for pushing and raising these issues and getting us to a point. I want to thank Alderman Tunny for his leadership and everyone else who cares passionately about these issues. This is a good day for Chicago. Thank you very much. Alderman Tunny.
Madam President, I reserve the right to finish my report later in the meeting.
Alderman Wagispack.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, thanks, Alderman Tunny, for intervening here. Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met October 10, 2019. Item number one on our agenda is a substitute ordinance to amend municipal code Title III by adding new chapter 394 to allow certain abatement of property tax levied on qualifying property pursuant to 35 ILCS 200/18-178 of the 2012 Property Tax Code. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And Alderman Thompson would like to speak on this issue before we move to a vote. Madam President, Alderman Thompson would like to speak to this item.
Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairman. Today, as the City Council moves forward with passing the Surviving Spouse Tax Abatement Ordinance, this is a small token of appreciation for the families of our heroes who have left, who are left grieving after an unspeakable loss. I'd like to thank the mayor for her support, Law Department for assisting, and especially my colleagues who co-sponsored this ordinance. The county has also passed its ordinance, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Daley, Commissioner Kabenarji for their efforts. I also would like to thank Joe Ahern, President of the Hunter Club, Mike Maher, and the chairman of the Hunter Club, for their work on behalf of our first responders and their families. These heroes lived to make a difference in this world, and they died as they lived, defending freedom, safeguarding peace, and preserving justice. These heroes have gone before us, gave their lives in the service of all Chicagoans, and this property tax abatement provides every resident the opportunity to show our appreciation for their sacrifice. So I again want to thank all my colleagues who reported this in committee and asked that they support this today. Thank you.
Chairman Wagispack.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to reiterate, the item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one else wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Alderman Lasparra. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Seijo Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spassato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vascas. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ostrman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman King is aye.
The ayes are 46. There are no nays. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All in favor of the motion for reconsideration, say aye. All opposed, say no. The noes have it. The motion fails. Chairman Wagispack.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two on the agenda is an ordinance to amend municipal code Section 2-32030, granting authority to the city comptroller to enter into intergovernmental data-sharing agreements necessary or useful for the collection and allocation of revenues. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance to amend the 1999 Master Indenture authorizing closure of senior lien water revenue bonds. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four is a substitute ordinance authorizing the commissioner of planning and development to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement, to enter into and execute a loan agreement, and to approve the issuance of a City of Chicago multifamily housing revenue note, Parkside 4 Phase 2, Series 2019, for Parkside 4 Phase 2 LLC. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number five is a substitute ordinance authorizing the commissioner of planning and development to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the redevelopment of Hibbert Elementary School and the Albany Park Multicultural Academy, Edison Regional Gifted Center. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If you wish to speak on the matter? No? If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of my colleagues was very excited for this ordinance.
As I can see.
Yes. Item number six is an ordinance authorizing the approval of the Second Amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Prime Store 119 LLC for certain retail and office space in the 119th I-57 tax increment financing redevelopment area. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing the restructure of the 2007 Home Investment Partnership for Phoenix House Apartments to facilitate the borrower sale to Heartland Phoenix House LLC. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Items nine through 11 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city, denial of payment of various small claims against the city, and orders authorizing the payment of senior citizen rebate sewer claims. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus. Item 12 consists-
Excuse me, Chairman Alderman Garza.
I apologize for the interruption. I'd just like to be recorded as a yes vote on the first item on the finance agenda.
So ordered. Alderman Vascas.
Could be requested to be recorded as an aye for the first item on the chair of finance reported.
So ordered. Chairman Wagispack.
Thank you. Item 12 consists of three orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlements in the cases of Torita Adams as special administrator of the estate of Chiquita Adams deceased versus City of Chicago and Officer Jamie Jawor individually and as an agent of the City of Chicago. That's item 11A. 12A, pardon me, 12A. And Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Irvin would like to be recorded as voting no. Item B is Eric Smith and Wavonia Haywood Jones versus Michael Alaniz, Rodrigo J. Corona and the City of Chicago. And Alderman Gardner would like to be recorded as voting no. Item C, Corona Williams on behalf of herself and her son, John Doe, and Nassim Stevens versus City of Chicago, George Lopez, Enrique Pacheco, Joseph Zalky, and Anita Wieter. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, except for, with the exception of the Alderman who wished to be recorded as voting no. At this time, I renew my motion, including the just stated no votes.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes the Committee on Finance report.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on October 2, 2019. The committee recommends passage of the following items. A redevelopment agreement for Mercer Street Holdings 3 LLC, and approving the Neighborhood Opportunities Fund grant for Living Fresh Market at 3250 West Roosevelt in the 24th Ward. A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the year 45 CDBG ordinance. A substitute ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance year 2019 within Fund Number 925. An amendment of municipal code Chapter 2-53 concerning the powers and duties of the City Council Office of Financial Analysis introduced by Alderman Dowell, Smith, and Riley. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Alderman Vegas, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on October 10, 2019. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item one is the appointment of Maurice D. Cox as a member of the Community Development Commission. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items two through 15 are a series of appointments to various special service areas. Kristen A. Duncan to SSA 1-2015 State Street Commission. Frank Euler to SSA Number 20- Kristen A. Duncan to SSA 1-2015 State Street Commission, Frank Euler to SSA Number 22 Andersonville Commission, Marcy Huddus to SSA Number 33 Wicker Park and Bucktown Commission, David Janopel to SSA Number 33 Wicker Park and Bucktown Commission, Elizabeth Peterson to SSA Number 34 Uptown Commission, Suleen Hurt to SSA Number 42 71st Street Commission, Judy Minor Jackson to SSA Number 42 71st Stony Commission, Ayisha Kareem to SSA Number 42 71st Street Stony Commission, Gregory Smith to SSA Number 42 71st Stony Commission, Mohammed Junad Butt to SSA Number 43 Devon Avenue Commission, Dallas Gordon to SSA Number 45 103rd Hostet Commission, Sarah Blackstone Lukens to SSA Number 54 Sheridan Road Commission, Keith R. Brandonberger to SSA Number 55 111th KESI Commission, Antonella Frangella Quinn to SSA Number 55 111th KESI Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item sixteen is a resolution for a Class 6B Tax Incentive for Property located at 4207 West Ogden Avenue in the 22nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seventeen is a resolution for a Class 6B Tax Incentive for Property at O'Hare Cargo Center, Building 837 Chicago O'Hare International Airport in the 41st Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on this item. Within the preceding twelve months, Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in a law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented the applicant, Arrow O'Hare, within the preceding twelve months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, Cook County Board of Review, Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, and the Circuit Court of Cook County relating to other property.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items eighteen through twenty-eight are a series of tax levies, budgets, and service provider agreements for various special service areas. SSA Number 1, 2015 State Street Commission; SSA Number 2, Belmont Central Commission; SSA Number 7, KESI Industrial Track Commission; SSA Number 10, Back of the Yards Commission; SSA Number 13, Stockyards Commission; SSA Number 20, Southwestern Commission; SSA Number 22, Andersonville Street Commission; SSA 31, Greater Ravenswood Commission; SSA Number 39, Brighton Park Archer Heights Commission; SSA 103rd Street Beverly Commission; and SSA Number 64, Walden Parkway Commission. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, this concludes my report.
Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, I would like to be recorded as aye on the first item of finance, if there are no objections.
Hearing no objections. The record will reflect you voting aye. Committee on Housing, Chairman Osterman.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held its meetings on October 7th, 2019, and October 11th, 2019. Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is the appointment of Angela Herlock as Commissioner of the Chicago Housing Authority. I reserve my motion until after any of my colleagues who wish to speak on this appointment have done so. I move passage of this appointment by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items two and three are ordinances for the negotiated sales of city-owned property at 2019 West Washington Boulevard and 2021-2023 West Washington Boulevard in the 27th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is an ordinance for the conditional sale of city-owned property to Veterans of America Illinois in the 16th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is an ordinance for the sealed bid auction sale of city-owned vacant lot property at 4118 and 4128-36 West Lake in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six is an ordinance for the sale of city-owned property at 309 West 47th in the 3rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items seven through nine are ordinances for negotiated sales of city-owned vacant lots at 729 West 83rd Street in the 21st Ward, 1258 South Karlov in the 24th Ward, and 5403 South Marshfield in the 16th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items ten through twelve are ordinances for the sale of city-owned vacant property through the adjacent neighbor land acquisition program at 427 North Ridgeway Avenue in the 27th Ward, 5622 South Lafayette Avenue in the 3rd Ward, and 6027 South Aberdeen in the 16th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item thirteen is an ordinance for non-exclusive easement grant in agreement with Commonwealth Edison for property at 3540 South Michigan Avenue in the 3rd Ward, for which I move passage of the same motion, if there's no
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item is an ordinance for a pilot program establishment and funding of the City Chicago Community Land Trust Affordable Housing and Home Ownership Program supervised by the Department of Housing. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Final item is an ordinance for the acquisition of property at 4400 to 4406 West Lawrence Avenue for the continued use of Chicago Public Library. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
So ordered.
That concludes my report. Madam President, I would like to suspend the rules and ask the clerk to read a memorial resolution recognizing Starr Campbell, a former employee for the Chicago Department of Housing.
Chairman Osterman, I'd ask that we do that after the reading of the committee reports, because we have, several of your colleagues also want to-
Okay.
-read some of our resolutions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz. Yes, Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, I'd like to be recorded as voting yes on item one in the finance agenda.
So recorded. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on October 8th, 2019 to discuss the following ordinance. Item number 02019-6951 is an ordinance to amend Section 4-60-160 regarding Sunday hours of operation for sales of packaged goods in supermarkets. In the 47th Ward, Madam President, I would like to allow Alderman Martin to speak on the item before I move passage.
Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is my first ordinance, and I wanted to just take a few minutes, actually fewer, to thank a few folks. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Your IGA team was incredibly helpful, Madam President, with obtaining the necessary information from VACP, so thank you for that. Thank you to Chairman Mitz, to Carl Erickson and her staff for the assistance, as well as the other members of the License Committee who took time out of their day to talk with me about this issue. And briefly, it's something where we're going to be helping small businesses in my ward and throughout Chicago who are locally owned and operated grocers who are finding it challenging to compete with supermarkets in terms of the sale of packaged goods on Sunday mornings. So I very much appreciate the support that this has obtained to date, and I hope that for the remainder of my colleagues, we can earn your support in the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Congratulations, Alderman Martin. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the passage of this ordinance by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful association to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two was 02019-6931. It's an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago designating a precinct of the 13th Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting addition of shared housing. Alderman Quinn. We have five ordinance regarding moratoriums in various wards, Ward 36, 47, 48, 49, and the 50th Ward. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on October 8th, 2019. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Wednesday, October 9th, 2019. Before the committee, there were 263 items. There were 252 routine items that passed and 11 routine items that did not pass. There were two Municipal Code ordinances that were introduced. One was an ordinance introduced by City Clerk Anna Valencia, an amendment of Municipal Code 3-56-050 extending standard municipal veteran license plates, license pilot program until January 31st, 2021. And one was an ordinance introduced by Alderman Harry Osterman for the 8th Ward, an amendment of the Municipal Code Section 9-12-045 by modifying shared street program on portions of West Argyle Street. If there is no objection, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Public Safety, Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Friday, October 11th, 2019. There was one item before the committee for which the committee recommended passage by voice vote. Item number one is the appointment of Frank J. Lindblum to the Chicago Emergency Telephone Systems Board. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move the passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
The Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, Chairman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. Looks like I'm going to have a clear path today. No, no, no.
You spoke too soon, I think.
Right, yeah. First one was a little bumpy road, so. Reporting on your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, which held a meeting on Monday, October 7th, my birthday, by the way, 2019. The Committee recommends passes of one item, an ordinance 02019-7011, an expenditure of open space impact fees for Carabe Community Garden 455-457 North Waller. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance associated with the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President, this concludes my report.
Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Reporting for your Committee on Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on October 10th, 2019, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Page two, a mayoral amendment to the Municipal Code Chapters 10-8 and 10-40. Pages 3 through 43 included 482 ordinance for grants of privilege introduced by local Alderman from wards 1 through 6, 8 through 12, 14 through 50. Page 44 and 45 include 37 ordinances for canopies introduced by local Alderman in wards 1, 2, 3, 5, 12, 20, 23, 25 through 27, 30, 32, 41 through 45. Page 46 includes nine ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local Alderman in wards 1 and 2, 32, 40, 42, and 46. Page 47 through 51 includes 34 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local Alderman from wards 2, 4, 8, 23, 25, 27, 28, 30, 32, 33, 38, and 39, 42, 44, 45, and 48. Page 52 includes one subdivision ordinance located in the 47th Ward. Page 53 includes one dedication ordinance located in the 24th Ward. Page 53 includes one street opening ordinance and two vacation ordinances located in the 24th, 25th, and 27th wards. If there are no objections, I move for the passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Committee on Zoning, Alderman Tunny.
Madam President, and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, for which a meeting was held on October 15th. In the morning, the 10:00 AM, the following ordinances and orders were passed by the majority of the members present. Page one contains the appointment of Tiara Hughes as a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. Pages 1 through 13 contain various map amendments in the 1st, 2nd, 6th, 11th, 12th, 17th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 30th, 31st, 32th, 34th, 35th, 36th, 37th, 38th, 40th, 42th, 43th, 44th, 46th, 47th, 48th, and the 50th wards. I want to note that Alderman Burke has Rule 14 and recused himself from two items, that being item number 02019-6827, and the address 808 North Cleveland Avenue. And the second item, 02019-6862, address 2501 North Damon Avenue. I hereby move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which was held, the marathon meeting was held on October 15th at 2:00 PM, and was reconvened this morning, October 16th. The following items were passed by the majority of members present. Page one contains an amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-120-600 regarding Chicago Landmark Commission membership. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the appointment of Paula Aguirre Serrano as a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the appointment of Guacolda Reyes as a member of the Chicago Plan Commission. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who has asked to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains an amendment of the Municipal Code Chapters 1710 and 1717 by adding new sections, 1710-1011 and 17-17- and 17-170251.5 concerning electric vehicles and electric vehicle supply. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And page 1 and 2 contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, in the 4th, 8th, 10th, 11th, 27th, 35th, 41st, 42nd, 43rd, 44th, and 46th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Chairman Sawyer, Committee on Health.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting on your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a meeting on October 3rd, 2019. Committee has a report recommending passage of the following items. A communication from the Honorable Lori Lightfoot Mayor, appointment of Allison Arwiti as Commissioner of Public Health, was held in committee on October 3rd, 2019. A resolution introduced by the Honorable Lori Lightfoot Mayor and Alderman George Cartonis, calling on reaffirmation of commitment to renewable energy on CTA bus fleets, was re-referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. A resolution introduced by Alderman Tom Tunnie, calling on Governor JB Pritzker, Senate Representative Michael Madigan, Illinois Department of Aging and Illinois Department of Rehabilitation, to build sustainable, long-term, in-home care infrastructures for seniors, persons with disabilities, family members, caregiving workforce, and senior service providers, was passed in committee on October 3rd, 2019. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Tunnie.
Thank you, Madam Chair and my colleague, Chairman Sawyer. I wanted to speak on this resolution. As you know, in the public comment period, we had numerous members from Jane Addams Senior Caucus. They're here with their patients still, urging all of us to support this resolution. And obviously, speaking of patients, many of these people, as was stated, spend a lot of time caring for each other, caring to keep seniors in their homes, out of nursing homes. And this resolution urges the state to recognize the fact that every day, there's 65,000 people that turn 65 in the United States. And we are behind the eight ball in recognizing the care, the independence, and the support that we need to give these people to stay in their communities, which they grew up, they shopped, and they want to stay. And I want to applaud the Jane Addams Senior Caucus for their, in my opinion, I've been working with them for almost 40 years, trying to keep people healthy and staying in communities. So it's our goal that we work with our leadership in Springfield and make sure that we recognize how important seniors are to our city and our communities. And I urge everyone to support this resolution. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chairman Sawyer.
Chairman Sawyer.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
I just want to, go ahead. I just want to say to the health care workers who are here, my mother spent her last of her working years as a home health care aide, making sure that seniors, people who were sick and infirm, had, were able to live their life with dignity and support. So I'm fully on board and support you. And I also want to make sure that we do a better job in raising the compensation for home health care workers, so. Chairman Sawyer, I believe that you need to move for your votes.
Certainly. I move passage of the items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
I received from the clerk a listing of items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions offered by Alderman Dow, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Ravoras, Alderman Austin, Alderman Carlos Ramirez, Alderman Waggits Pack, Alderman Mitts, Alderman Smith, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman. I move the passage of the agreed calendar, Madam President.
No objection.
Thank you, Madam President.
I think it's Osterman. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry. I wanted to take a moment to recognize the passing of Chuck Lamonto. He was longtime Dick Mall Chief of Staff. He was a public servant for many decades. He was beloved by many. He was actually very helpful to us when we took office. And he actually came to our office and asked us what we needed in order to be able to set up our office, which I really appreciated. So I just wanted to mention him and keep him in everybody's minds here. Keep his wife, Kim, in everybody's mind here as they grieve the loss of Chuck. And I will be introducing a memorial resolution in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Osterman.
President, I'd like to suspend the rules so the clerk could read a memorial tribute to recognize Starr Campbell, an amazing young woman who was working in the Department of Housing and recently passed away. We are joined today by her family. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Whereas Starr Campbell was born on July 3rd, 1985, in Chicago, Illinois, to her God-fearing parents, Michael Campbell Sr. and Mary Campbell. And whereas her mother prayed to be blessed with a daughter, and God answered her prayer through a vision and named the daughter Starr, the only girl and the second youngest of five children. And whereas she was born with big dreams, hopes, and wishes. She had drive and ambition in addition to a mean right hook. Her heart was as big as a house and her spirit filled with glitter and gold. She was blessed as an adult and refused to take less. And whereas she served at Maplewood Baptist Church under the leadership of Bob Heath, and used her grace to touch countless lives, and her smile was like a ray of sunshine. And whereas she was educated at John Marshall High School in the medical field. She held a health science degree from Eastern Illinois University and received her master's degree in public administration from Roosevelt University. And whereas she held a position with the City of Chicago, Department of Housing, as a project coordinator for URA, SRO, AHPO programs, and served the most vulnerable population, including the mentally ill, seniors, and the homeless. Prior, she held positions as a resident service manager with the Habitat Company, housing supervisor with Heartland Alliance, administration coordinator for the Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago. And whereas she was outstanding in her field and all the organizations and executives who had the privilege of working with her were extremely impressed with her knowledge and professionalism. She was on track to achieve great accomplishments in her career and her life. And whereas she was quoted as saying, "She came, she called, she saw, she conquered." And whereas she served in numerous organizations, including the Order of Eastern Starr and Pure Destiny Social Club. And whereas she had a birthday fundraiser for the Suicide Prevention Association in order to raise awareness for the dire need for mental health intervention and for those who are burdened with extreme depression and related mental illness. And whereas she was greatly admired and loved by the City of Chicago Department of Housing staff, where she always demonstrated support, knowledge, understanding, and genuine concern and friendship towards her colleagues. And whereas she transitioned from labor to reward on August 19th, 2019. And whereas she said, quote, "You are a spirit in a body, not a body in a spirit. So making the body beautiful is fun, but making the spirit beautiful is the main goal of life." And whereas she leaves to cherish her memory her loving and supportive mother, Mary Campbell, four brothers, Michael Jr., Laquana, Sean, Richard, and Christopher, two nephews, Michael III and Mashawn, one niece, Ataria, five uncles, Gary, Jerry, Dale, Gregory, and Stanton, and one aunt, Diane, and a host of family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago assemble this 16th day of October, 2019, honor the life and memory of Starr Campbell and extend our sincere condolences to her family. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be prepared and presented to the parents of Starr Campbell as a sign of our deep gratitude for the exceptional and selfless service of Starr Campbell to the people of Chicago and her caring friendship for her colleagues at the city.
Chair recognizes Alderman Ravoras? No? All right. Sorry. Alderman Osterman.
Starr Campbell was a special person. Her first name fit her well, if you met her, with her personality. She lit up a room. And she was a dedicated advocate for people that need housing in our city and worked within the Department of Housing, Department of Planning, to make sure that city government worked on behalf of them. She brought her passion to work every day. She lit up the room. She lit up and spread her joy with her coworkers. I had a chance to work with her on an ordinance, senior relocation ordinance that helped seniors out, and spent time with her the Friday before she passed away. And she was dedicated and looked at things through the lens of the people that she was trying to help, which in this case was senior citizens. And she made a huge impact. She made an impact on the people that know her. She made an impact with the people that she worked with. Her family is behind me today. And she made an impact with them and everyone that knew her. So on behalf of all of us, my deepest condolences to the Campbell family. She will be always remembered. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ravoras. Do you have a matter you'd like to have read?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that we need to remind ourselves is that the census will be here, and we're working on it. And all my colleagues, you'll be receiving some information, if you have not already. I want to thank the mayor for asking me to speak on this matter because we are going to be doing probably three or four forums citywide. But I need you, 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 to help me make this happen by reaching out to your constituents because everyone needs to be counted. Everyone needs to be counted. But it's something that we have to put in our minds. We have work to do. I'm going to do my part, and I know our colleagues in the 49th additional wards will be doing there. So thank you for your support. Thank you for working with us. And thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Alderman Mitts.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to suspend the rules to honor one of our city employees who spent 37 years on the job and is now retiring. And we have with us Mr. Rick Contras, who was a CAPS organizer for 24 years with the Chicago Police Department, if he could stand, and we could recognize him and congratulate him on his retirement, wishing you a well, well-deserving retirement. Rick, CAPS wouldn't have been what it is if it hadn't been for you out there. Many years ago, that's when Robert really met the road because he was out there with the peoples in the neighborhood, making things happen. So I want to thank you for your service that you've given, and thank you, and wishing you well on your retirement, you and your family. God bless you.
Yes. Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wanted to wish Rick happy retirement. Rick, thank you on behalf of the residents of the 3rd ward for your care and attention to our ward and to the residents who live there. I wish you the best as you move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alderman Ravoras.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to support this resolution. Rick, where are you? Stand up, please. Rick, don't hide. The fact is that, Rick, you've been working for a long time in several departments, and we all appreciate that. I want to thank you for years of service, in particular for piloting the program, making the right choice, making the right decision because you started that, and I appreciate that. And it's very, very important that our kids understood that. Today, you're making the right choice. I also want to make sure that you instill that because there comes a time where, you know, you just got to pass the baton on and let other leaders learn as you did. So thank you. God bless you and your family.
Alderman Cartonis.
I'd be remiss if I didn't join in this resolution. I know Rick for many, many years and his work at CAPS. He ought to stick around and teach others the right way of doing CAPS, being active in the community, setting forth priorities, all the things that he taught me and how to follow up with issues that matter to residents on a day-to-day basis. Thank you, Rick. Please stay involved. You're still young at heart. And I know you've done great work throughout the city. A lot of people recognize that. And, you know, I'm just happy to get up and say something very positive. You deserve that. Thank you.
Alderman Harris. We're back to you. Do we pass on our way?
We already passed.
New business. The clerk will call the wards beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license, the exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 17-3-0503D, by reclassifying segments of North Clark Street as a pedestrian street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Gardner has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 7-28, concerning increased violations of collection bins, referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapters 3-47 and 4-64, regarding retail sale of electronic cigarettes, liquid nicotine products, and tobacco, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapters 3-47-464, concerning electronic cigarettes, liquid nicotine products, and tobacco, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for repeal of a taxicab stand on portion of East Illinois Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley and Alderman Martin have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapters 17-10 and 17-17, by adding new section 17-10-1011 and 17-17-0251 concerning electric vehicles and electric vehicle supply equipment, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-92, by adding new Section 2-92-635, clarifying trucking services and construction contracts, which are referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity; Alderman Telafiero has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-84, by adding a new Section 2-84-197, concerning quarterly reports on murders and murder clearance rates in the City of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Telafiero has proposed ordinance for donation of city self-containing breathing apparatus to the County of Haiti, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Telafiero also has proposed ordinance for donation of self-containing breathing apparatus to the country of Jamaica, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; and a proposed ordinance for donation of a turnout firefighter gear and equipment to the country of Ghana's International Fire Training Force, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Telafiero also has proposed ordinance for donation of a turnout firefighter gear and equipment to the country of Antigua International Fire Training Force, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; and a proposed ordinance for donation of an obsolete city fire department ambulance to the country of Liberia's International Fire Training Force, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Terrell Fierro also has proposed ordinance for donation of an obsolete stoke baskets, saws, and skechers to the country of Haiti's International Fire Training Force, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary plumber's campus, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; Alderman Maldonado and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on staff shortages and class sizes in Chicago Public Schools and Chicago Park District settlement contract on staffing, compensation, benefits, and promotion opportunities, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development; Alderman Tavares has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; Alderman Brickins and others have proposed ordinance to call for mandatory active, alive, active shooter training in all public and private professional buildings, which are referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 8-4-127, concerning cyber stalking and cyber flashing, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for public hearings on unfilled employee vacancies within every department of the City of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations; Alderman Burke has proposed ordinance for approval of a plan of Gage Park Community Education Campus subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for designation of the 15th Precinct of the 13th Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection; Alderman Cardenas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection; Alderman Cardenas and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on People's Gas System Modernization Program, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy; Alderman Cardenas and others also have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 11-4, by adding a new Section 11-4-615, concerning notice of air permit applications, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy; Alderman Cardenas and others also have proposed resolution to call for the Governor of Illinois and the General Assembly to support the passage of the Clean Energy Jobs Act, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy; Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for designation of the 31st Precinct of the 11th Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection; Alderman Beal has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 11417 South Forestville Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; Alderman King and Alderman Dowell have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-244-140, that prohibits peddling on various portions of the public way within the 3rd and 4th wards, which are referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection; Alderman Dowell and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings to address unruly motorcycle and bike stunt riding groups, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 9-64-206, concerning parking meter installation and hours of operation on portion of West Fullerton Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety; Alderman Hopkins also has proposed resolution for the expression of support for adult use of various plants and call for hearings to discuss findings of the Department of Public Health on feasibility of using such plants as compounded alternative treatment options, referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations; Alderman Hopkins also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Justice John Paul Stevens Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Alderman Laspada has proposed resolution to call for the Chicago Department of Transportation to formally recognize Division Street's streetscape during review of public way permits, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Alderman Laspada and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on Lincoln Yards and Cortland and Chicago River Tax Increment Financing Districts, which are referred to Committee on Finance; Alderman Laspada and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on e-scooter pilot program, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety; Alderman Hairston and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title II, by adding a new Chapter 2-83, to establish Civilian Police Accountability Council, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety; Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 7-23, to prohibit adult-use cannabis businesses establishments, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and There's one correction. Alderman Maldonado and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on staff shortages and class sizes in Chicago Public Schools, Chicago Park District settlement contracts on staffing, compensation, benefit, and promotions, which is referred to the Committee on Education.
All those in favor approving a Journal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried. Unfinished business.
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Chairman Dowell, regarding the Budget Committee.
I thought I heard you say that you concurred with the report.
I believe I did, but just for clarity's sake, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
All right. Miscellaneous business.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next council meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the Clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago for Wednesday, November 13, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. I will note that the next time that we convene will be a week from now, on the 23rd, for the budget address. Roll call on the omnibus.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Sedlaski-Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brickins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tavares, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Telafiero, Alderman Ravorios, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagaspack, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez-Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitch, Alderman Spazado, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunney, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kappelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein.
Alderman Thompson. On the omnibus, there are 50 yays and 0 nays. The matter in the omnibus are past. Alderman Thompson.
Madam President, I, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Council is adjourned.